I'd like to call a meeting to order tonight, our regular school board meeting at 6:57. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm sorry, audience, please remain standing, I'm sorry.
We would like to have a moment of silence in memory of Fran Strain, who was a school nurse for those who died in a skiing accident. Hope you can take a moment, please. Please be seated. At this time, before we start the regular meeting, we would like to have, take a few moments to talk about Fran and to share some comments that we've had. Matt, would you like to start, please, or Harris?
(Inaudible) The children, the visitor Fran Strain may not have always been healed. Some kids need a friend, note her Dom Passera, but some kids need a friend to soothe their heads hard. Some kids needed Fran's reassurance. Some kids needed Fran's dental care. Some kids just needed Fran's love. No matter what the children needed, Dan was able to provide it. Her hands healed, her words healed, her heart healed. The student staff and community that she served would be better off for being healed by her.
Thank you.
Jim, you had worked with Fran for many years.
Today was one of the toughest days of my career, but as tough as it was for us at the middle, my thoughts and prayers go to her family at this time. Fran was a real pillar, excuse me, a strain for us. You can count on Fran for anything. She was always such a part of the building. She was friendly with everybody and gave you the honest truth. Sometimes a little too honest, but the honest truth. She was loved by everyone there, and she'll never be replaced.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Glenn, would you like to also?
Also, Fran worked at your school, isn't she?
Yeah. You know, echo what Mr. Simpson said. She was very hardworking, caring for the kids, very loving. The staff met, again, tough day as well at the building. The staff met in the morning. One thing they decided, they wanted to dedicate a book to all the classrooms and the libraries in her honor. And they chose the book Heart Prints, because of the love and kindness that she left with our kids. And the book defines heart prints as the impression left behind by an act of kindness. And the teachers read the book today to the kids, especially at the young age with the elementary. It's a tough conversation to have with a group of young children. But the kids, you know, they talked about the different heart prints that Mrs. Strain left behind at the school. And, you know, the day started off pretty rough with a lot of tears. And by the end, there was a lot of nice stories and kind acts that were shared. She'll surely be missed, and our prayers go out to her family.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Anybody else?
I have a few things myself. I knew Fran from St. Barbara's. She does some of the same ministries that my husband and I do. Shortly after her accident, a Facebook page was set up called "Five for Fran." Friends, family, anyone, was asked to take five minutes at 5 o'clock every day and think of Fran and pray for Fran. After Fran passed on Saturday, the page still stayed active. And what the people who were maintaining the page wanted people to do was write down thoughts about Fran. Some memories, some kind words, whatever. So I wanted to share some of them with you right now. I just picked a few, that I just picked out my favorites, I'll say. She was always there as a help, always had a smile, and was always just pleasant to be with. Another person wrote, "An angel has gotten her wings." Another one, "Fran was a kind soul that touched many lives." And here's yet one more. "She handled the kids with such patience and care, but knew how to see through some of the middle school shenanigans." A great combination, you probably appreciate that, right? And finally, my last one, and this is from, like I want to say, the mouth of babes. "After our first grade teacher last fall, Marilyn Jojja, died, one of the students said that the kids from Sandy Hook in Newtown must have needed a first grade teacher. Now, after Nurse Fran died, another student came forward and said the kids must have also needed a school nurse." So we will all miss her at Penn Trafford, and we will continue to think of her family, especially in the next few days. Thank you. All right. Brett?
Mrs. Issing?
Here.
Mr. Kachasik?
Here.
Dr. Koschko?
Here.
Mr. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Newell is absent due to work. Mr. Neiman?
Here.
Mr. Trucey?
Here.
Mr. Stovall?
Here.
Dr. Trey?
Here.
Governor, Madam President?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Prior to this meeting, a brief executive session was held to discuss personnel matters and for receipt of information. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 13, 2014?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Leonard, second by Mr. Dr. Trey.
Question.
Question being called for. All favorited motions, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, thank you. Dr. Harris, information?
Sure, we're going to begin the meeting with Lucas Johnson. He is our student union representative from the high school.
Hello, everyone, how's everyone doing? We're going to start off with sports. Spring sports such as baseball, softball, tennis, track, and volleyball are beginning to have signups in the cafeteria. Winter sports are coming to a close as the fall sports begin another few months of conditioning. Prom buzz is very clearly seen around the school as the boys try to create ideas on whom and how to ask the girls looking for dresses. This heist is only the beginning stages as prom will not be held until May 2, but tickets will be sold sometime in April. The second semester, students are focused on academics more than ever as the school year winds down to zero. The third quarter is usually the grade saver or breaker when it comes to the end of the school year, so everyone is tensing up as the year winds down. The word cash dash is constantly focusing on promotions to create financial literacy while at school. This month, there's promotions for Valentine's Day. The next promotion is to be seen when we focus on a sports package for students/staff to end this miserable winter and welcome everyone as Mother Nature moves on to spring. The community action program, this month, they will begin their annual spring food drive at elementary school. It's already kicked us off. Is there any questions or comments? Thank you.
Sounds like a lot of fun speaking, man. Student of the Month, this is my favorite and actually the school board's favorite part of the meeting. We're going to begin with Dan Denabli from Level Green. Dr. Harris?
Gives me great pleasure to have Juliana Palisack, a fifth grade student, represent Level Green Elementary as Penn Trafford's Elementary Student of the Month. Juliana is the daughter of Jennifer and Chris Palisack, which we like to call the Village of Level Green, as well as the older sister of Brayden, who's sitting in the back there. He's in third grade at Level Green. Not only being a moral student, Juliana is well-rounded and very active. She enjoys playing soccer. She enjoys playing club soccer in the Alleghany Forest Football Club and practices tap, jazz, and ballet in Janet School Dance. Juliana recently took part in the Putee's Grand Talent, a few weeks ago, and did a fantastic job. She also took part in the Level Green Talent Show last Friday. Juliana enjoys a lot of other things, but she says honestly soccer and dance take up most of her weight, so she's pretty full. Juliana's current teacher, Mr. Joe Venidi, who is here as well, states Juliana is the type of student that actually listens to every word I say, literally. That is saying a lot, having to hear me talk. Her eyes are glued to whomever is speaking, no matter what may be going on around her. In addition to being an outstanding student, Juliana is very unselfish. She is willing to help anyone at any time, whether it's her best friend or someone she hardly knows. Continues to say, I guess you could say that Juliana is one of the most unselfish people that I've had the pleasure to meet. Others in the school state Juliana is highly motivated and a leader amongst her peers. She represents Level Green well, and we are proud to have her in our school. I got a chance to talk to her brother a little bit today, more on one. Called Donna to the office of the loudspeakers. Brady says there are times when they argue, but at the end, it's all good. Brady enjoys playing Xbox and spending time, many days in the summer, swimming in their parents' pool with his sister. Lately, with all the snow they've been having, they've been getting into some good snowball battles. Brady states Juliana is a great person and loves having her as his sister. He also stated that you help him clean his bedrooms sometimes. He was just making that up, not. The Penn Trafford School District and Level Green Elementary would like to congratulate Juliana on being the elementary student.
Congratulations, Juliana, well done. I look forward to seeing you at High School News, showing off your D S M gown. Okay? Keep it up.
Next, we have a middle school student at Trafford Middle School. So we're going to ask Roger Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. It's an honor for me and for Trafford Middle School to recognize Sidney Smith as Trafford's Student of the Month. Sidney is an eighth grader at Trafford Middle School and today with her is her mother and father. Sidney is a straight A student and has been all year. In fact, nothing lower than a 95 percent. She's taking advanced classes such as advanced literature and geometry, math being her favorite subject. I met with her in my office and I said to her, you know, you've had nothing but an A all year long. She quickly corrected me and said, Mr. Sullivan, I've never had anything lower than an A. She is a spectrum student and has participated in the Great Debate, Junior Achievement, and the photography competitions. She shows off our Penn Trafford school spirit as a middle school cheerleader and was captain of the squad this year. She is a homeroom representative for her student union and is one of the students who produces and delivers the daily morning announcements on TV at the middle school. Sidney is an accomplished swimmer for the Greensburg YMCA and the Aimaker Swim Club, swimming the butterfly and freestyle events. And she plans to swim for the high school. See this with that over there. She is a member of the Community United Methodist Church, where she also volunteers, generally working with children. Sidney says she plans to pursue something in the medical field, clinical, because she likes to work with people. Here's what some of her teachers say about her. She's determined, motivated, and thoughtful. Sidney was a slam dunk selection. She is courteous, extremely respectful, humble, and someone that just has success written all over her. She's a great role model for Trafford Middle School. In my class, I don't view Sidney as another student. She's an extension of the teacher, often looking to help others and making sure everyone is included at all times. Sidney is without a doubt a first-class student. Sidney is a conscientious student. Her inquisitive nature causes her to look deeper into material, and she looks for real-world connections. She is also extremely pleasant and helpful to students around her. My fellow students think that she is kind, friendly, smart, athletic, pretty, and has many friends. She's a definite leader. Sidney, we're very proud of you, congratulations.
Congratulations, Sidney, well done. What grade were you in again? Eight, so next year we're going to see you in a high school. What about along the line with football games, cheering?
Uh, in years.
Good luck to you.
And from the high school, Mr. Glass?
Laurel, come on up. I have Laurel Hilliker, 12th grader at high school. How scary is this? We make these poor kids stand in the middle, I guess. So nervous and scared of that, and I don't blame you, but it'll only be two minutes, Laurel, maybe more. Laurel's a senior at the high school, as I said. I see she's here with her mom. Hi, mom. Congratulations. You've done well with her. She also has a brother, Alex, who's in eighth grade at Trafford Middle School. Laurel is number one in our class. She has a 4.6 grade point average, and it seems like every year that GPA climbs and climbs and climbs. It's the highest we've ever had at the high school with all the weighted courses. Believe me, she's taken every one possible, and it's been a little bit of a chore trying to get her schedule to work, but she's managed it by juggling things around and taking things over the summer and manipulating things, and she's done very well with it. She's also in the band in color guard in ninth and 10th grade. She's a part of NHS. Gave my attention that a year or two, she decided she wanted to play violin. And she just decided, I'm going to give this a try. This is just a year or two ago. She started taking violin lessons, and I understand she's a very accomplished violinist right now. So that's quite accomplishment for somebody to do this late in life. So, great job, Laurel. She also volunteers at the local library, the VA, Special Olympics, and at a retirement community in Turtle Creek. Something else she's involved in, which takes a tremendous amount of time, is the mock trial that we have here at the high school. We have a team of kids who work hours and hours after school and work on different cases, a particular case that they practice for and compete. They beat Southmoreland last month, and they're going to compete against Greensburg-Salem here on Wednesday, February 12 at 5:00 p.m., so if you're available. Anybody's welcome. They're going to go against Greensburg-Salem at courtroom, in courtroom number five at the Westmoreland County Courthouse. So we wish them luck. As a part of that team, she's the lead lawyer there. She signed as a leader with that group because she has the most experience. The kids look up to her for advice. She spends countless hours looking over the court documents and evidence and pages and pages of information to go through it and pull out the important pieces and share with younger kids on what they need to do. So she does a great job with that. And we wish you luck next week on that. We also have the academic quiz team, which she's a part of. And she's been a leader in that the last four years. She has been, actually, she's actually the top scorer right now in the Westmoreland County League of all the schools. So she does very well. She's been named the team MVP this year and captain. And, you know, she's the one they look to make decisions and strategies on how to attack the team and what the best strategies are to win the competition. As a spinoff of the quiz team, she's also been a part of the Hometown IQ. You may have seen it on television. That's on every Saturday on Channel 2. And I remember watching, I think it was in December, they competed against Upper St. Clair and Hampton High School, and Laurel and her team won. They really did a great job in beating two very, very talented schools, Upper St. Clair and Hampton. So they advanced to the next round, and I believe that their competition is next month. I'm not sure when that'll be aired on TV, but it comes a few weeks later typically. But we wish you luck there. Laurel's also involved in a creative roundtable, which is another organization that takes a lot of dedication and some of her leadership skills. She's been a member since we began here a few years ago. Creative Writing Roundtable is a student-led group where they take pieces of writing and they critique them and give feedback and submit them for publication recognition. And this year, Laurel has won the Silver Key in Flash Fiction and Mark One, and she also won an honorable mention in Writing Portfolio. So she's done very well with that. When I talked with Laurel today, she's commented that she's with the breadth of education that she's received here at Penn Trafford. She feels very, very prepared for her life afterwards and the rigors of college. She plans on majoring in geology, which is a different major. Don't have too many going into geology, but she wants to specialize, she's thinking in volcanology or hydrology, so very interesting. Her top college choices right now are Columbia University, Rice University, and the University of Chicago. She's waiting acceptance, hopefully, right as of today. She says she'd like to go to Columbia, but she says every day it seems to change, depending on the weather. But anyways, Laurel, congratulations. It's an honor and privilege to have you as Student of the Month.
Thank you. Congratulations, Laurel. And I saw you on TV. We did watch you, we were proud of Penn Trafford. You know, my brother lives in Upper St. Clair, so we were really proud of Penn Trafford that day. And I'm sure you'll have a great career. I'm out of the college issues. You seem to have a lot of work here, and you're a hard worker. But luck to you.
And students, we're going to take a brief moment to have your picture taken by the press. There were three students a month. Please come over to the side of the room. As soon as the kids and the parents are leaving, we've been talking about different add-ons for the school the last couple of weeks. It started basically with our architect's recommendation that when we go offer bid in April, we may have up to a 10 percent of the projects. The bids might come lower. We might have up to 3.2 million to spend. We do not know for sure. It could be less, it could actually be more. But we wanted to have a plan in place. So April, the bid's open, we have extra money. We don't want to waste two or three more months deciding on what to do. So during the last meeting, we sort of got down to six ideas, and we revised, we defined some of our options. So we kind of just want to have a chance tonight to discuss some of those options. So I'm basically going to talk about each category, and if you have questions on it at this time, board, or if you want to have anything to say or input, that is fine. Hank is available. I can't see him, he's over there. So it's Dan, our construction management team from Zero. It looks like basically our high school annex was recommended as a top priority. Does anybody have any question? Second was the stadium register. And remember, we had to actually change the price at the last meeting because we had to take it back. We had to reconsider the price of the ramp and damage and some extra instructions to go along with the registry that they were brought in. Does anybody have any questions, remember?
I actually have some. And I actually forgot the ritual, but we want some clarification now. I believe we had to make some adjustments because of some ADA requirements as far as having a parking spot there. Can I clarify on that? What is, can you explain what those ADA requirements are? Why do we need a parking spot? Just because we have?
Whenever you're building a new structure, and it's a public building, a public structure, it has to meet the requirements for Americans with disabilities. It's got to be an accessible structure, meaning somebody with a disability has to be able to enter that building. And so it has to be on what they call an accessible route. And an accessible route is an area that somebody with a disability can get from their car to the building. The problem with where this building would be located at the top of your existing bleacher area, it's down kind of half over a hill, and the existing paved walkway is steeper than what's allowed by the codes for an accessible ramp. So the most cost-effective way to make it accessible is to allow, is to make an accessible parking space down there so that you can drive to that space and then make an accessible route from your parking space into that building.
They need, someone needs to be able to drive up to the restaurants.
Somebody needs to be able to get to the restaurants. And the most cost-effective way that we can come up with for making that happen with the location of your building is to allow them to drive to that location and park. Because the ramp would be extraordinarily long from your upper parking lot because of the change in elevation from.
So how do we envision the road, an access road, going to the restaurants?
It would, it basically would be to take the same route that the existing walkway takes. We would widen that walkway and we would reinforce that walkway to be able to support vehicular traffic.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Third one, replacing the boiler. And then we had a different, and there's reports. We kind of talked about it at one point. I know the recommendation was put closely at our last meeting. We've got some more information. And I know it was Hank's recommendation from the end there to replace the boiler and to replace it. Does anyone have any further concern? Can I express that? And then baseball parking. Keep in mind, I know we always talk about the baseball parking, but it's actually parking for all runs. The location, it's like lighting. Very quiet for me. With this one, two additional tennis courts. And finally, the library skylight. It seems almost dead last on everyone's shoulders. Remember, this is to replace, you're kind of in the area right above the computer lab for the skylight there, with natural lighting to the library. Any other concerns, some questions about this? All right, during the last week's conversation, we also talked about adding some parking spaces when we widened the bus move. How many parking spaces were you able to provide us?
There's a range. It's looking like it's about 45. It may be as many as 50, maybe as few as 43. I've got to finalize the drawings, but it's in that 45 range.
What was the estimated cost of doing that?
Twenty thousand dollars.
It was like $20,000. And we were going to roll right into the base bid.
And we were going to roll right into the base bid, it was not going to be an alternate, it was going to be, if I'm part of the...
Yeah, what it's doing is, it's widening that road from 24 feet to 30 feet wide to allow diagonal head-end parking for events.
And parking at the high school, as anyone who has been to one of our main events, we vouch that parking is definitely an issue, as well as, and then we've been talking about lighting for the parking, we need, or it might please that, or the lack of lighting. And you can definitely guarantee that lighting is surely needed. Last week, we also talked about the access road. We actually took the access road and it wasn't an add-on option, and we took it and added it to the base bid. How is the access road that we're adding back to base bid? I know originally, we had concerns from the community that the first access road was, how is it different than the first access road?
In the original design, it wasn't really an access road as much as, it was another full-functioning, daily-use road for buses, cars, public, for everybody to use. It was a true second way in and out of the campus on a daily use. It was a paved, two-lane road. And what was decided was to not pursue that route, but then the safety committee had concerns about there still only being one way on and off of this campus then, in the case of an actual emergency. So the idea was then to install a gravel emergency vehicular access road only that would be gated at both ends, both up here by the building and down at the far end of the school's property. So it would be gated off and not used for anything other than the unforeseen emergency.
Matt, just a second. When we were earlier, somebody used the term crisis road, or something like that.
Response road.
Response road. So I just want to make sure that this isn't a, this is something that's existed, but with some of the things that have happened more recently, the police department, I think, comes up, or you get audited by Westmoreland, and it's one of the things, correct me.
We do an audit. We started doing an audit by the Westmoreland Department of Safety, they had their audit recommendation. We had the gentleman come out, he actually went through every single one of our buildings. A lot of our findings, we were able to correct. We had videotape cameras, we had secured entrance with the door buzzers, we had issues with how many times we have to practice emergency drills, we had a lot of different things we could do in-house. A lot of our items that we did not fix or address, we kept saying, we're going to wait till the renovation project. And we're finally at the renovation project. One of them being the access road, because right now we may have one road going to the high school, the main drive. The second thing we have to address is the secured, the holding area. Some people call it like a holding cell when you go into a school, because right now, once you come into the building, there is nothing stopping you from going from the front entrance the whole way down to the school. And we actually want a secured entrance where we can actually stop, take care of all the business the parents or students or whoever's coming in has to do before they enter.
We call that either a captured vestibule or a secured vestibule. It's creating another set of doors with a locking system so that the public comes into a vestibule and then is allowed into the building from that vestibule, not through the first door.
Thanks. And with a lot of our items, we couldn't actually do, we're going to wait until it's fixed, because now it's actually time for, and we do, and if you come to our meetings in the past, chief autos here, we include Chief Dizzo from Trafford, we have all our SB6, fire departments, we actually have people from the municipal building, township, the road crew, we've talked about different things where safety we do two times a year, we address items that still need to be done, and first items that have to be done. And during this renovation, we want to finish off different products, projects. One was being the access road. And I know it has caused some confusion, because the first time that we were going to do it, we were going to use it daily. I know we had, was it that we had all the buses go out left? And if you weren't going to the left, you wouldn't take the main road?
Right, we were trying to, for exiting at the end of the day, we were trying to separate, it was one of the ways we were separating vehicular traffic from bus traffic. And we were, the buses were going out one way and the cars were going out the other way, and then we looked at possibly everybody that would be going left on 130 would exit through Warrior Court, and everybody was going right, would exit through the existing, so.
Now, how do you have it designed now, where traffic patterns are used?
We adjusted the traffic pattern, so now we created that bus loop. And the bus loop is how we're separating the parent or vehicular student and parent traffic from the bus traffic. The buses will line up and use that loop and go out, and the cars will, the parent pickup will be around that entrance that we have, kind of by the gymnasium where we're doing that loop, to separate the cars from the buses still. And then we will have, move the student parking to that parking lot in the front, and they will be released after the buses are released, so we won't have that intermixing of cars and buses. The free-for-all that happens now is at dismissal time.
Now, as part of the access road, it won't not be used for daily traffic?
No, no, it's just a gravel road. It would not, it couldn't be used for daily traffic if you wanted to.
What, not special events?
Not even special events. The idea, my understanding of what that gravel road was meant to be was from that security committee or safety committee, and it was truly a emergency response type emergency access road, to allow for a second way on and off of this campus in the case of an emergency.
That all sounds good, but who my concern is, and we both might have spoken on this road, and it's strictly needed for emergencies, I understand that. There has to be some policy written in place that states that there's only one person authorized the opening of the gates for any other reason other than emergency, and that would be a full support of this board. Any other chance to come in on that, I would not be, I would not be a guest there. Because, you know, forces say five years, and now somebody doesn't come in and say, okay, we have this road, gravel, and I'll always tape it. You know, nothing's going to be remembered what was said here, other than written factual policy. I don't know how I would go off the board with that, the other way, but I would support it. We ourselves have decided, and many and other have, we have some records and tax barriers. So we come and go, understand that there was a policy in place that has to be followed, and future board members will follow that policy as well. And they will have to be, ask for the rest, but that's to be changed from another. That's my concern. And what we stay here today, that's great. But we want to prevent this from being anything more than that kind of a road.
Senator Miller, board member, question, make a comment?
I do. I have to say, well, after hearing what the rest of the board members said, I have a couple of quick questions. The approximate cost of that installation, the gravel base, as opposed with gated access at both ends, what number would you assign?
Do you remember? I want to, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe the construction manager's number is around 43,000.
Yeah, it was in there, 40,000.
Forty-six.
Yeah, I have 40,000, 45,000. It's noted, I wasn't sure that was accurate. No, it's been a complete exploration of the other options and other opportunities to take a similar, albeit longer, road out to 993. You know that we've explored that, and that is not anywhere in the same ballpark as far as cost.
Right, there's only, your options are very limited considering the geography of this campus. There is a, there's a paper alley off of 993, which means there's access between two properties over there somewhere. But the problem is, it is down such a steep hillside that even if you took the entire football practice field and graded it out to allow for an access road down, my civil engineer is still saying that it's too steep to make really work. You have to switch back, and there's just not enough room without encroaching on houses and eminent domaining houses to make that work. And then the only other option is property that you don't currently own. The farm behind you, if that were your property, you could make a long road that would go out through the farm and come out onto 993, but it's not your property.
Okay, I have an additional concern. I reviewed the situation myself, and there's a pretty defined, looks like a stormwater diversion ditch at the base, I'm fairly certain that's what it is. If this does move forward to install that road, we certainly want to pay a good amount of attention to that and make sure we don't devote stormwater in a way that shouldn't go. So that would have to be, that may be an added cost. And I want to make sure that if this does move forward, there's a written policy, part of our policy manual that has, that does take, as Jesse said, future board, current board, an accident board to change that policy. So it is indeed an emergency-only type of use, and the gates on both ends would be controlled access for the lock, you unlock in those gates. But I do absolutely want to make sure, this is not an add option, now, this is part of the main project, that's why we need to make sure we're on the same page here, because I was under the kind of misconception, I had, I personally have to say, I had the two access roads, the add option to the access road, the van accessibility, for the handicap accessibility, for the Warrior restrooms, I didn't, I guess because I was out of loop a little bit for a while there at the holidays, I didn't focus directly on it. This is part of the main project. So if this board chooses to move forward, it's a big part of the main project, I definitely want to make sure we don't overlook the stormwater issue, make sure it has a written policy, and make sure that we have the gates secured at both ends, so it can't get overused or anything of that sort. In my prior conversations and my thought process, if we looked at the, that's an alternate way to get out, because out Warrior Court, Warrior Court ends up on Route 130, not far from our main entrance, so it doesn't give us a lot of relief, and that would affect. And the expenditure that we were looking at, I hope we got way that close enough, because we may have been into a little more of an expenditure than 45,000 if we had to do some stormwater changes there to accommodate the current storm conditions, because we can't directly channel that on the Warrior Court.
Correct. We've addressed the design, and we know that we have to, we have to control the, we have to take care of our own water, basically. And it all has to go through, not only the local review, but it's got to go through Westmoreland County and their reviews. So that's all, that's all in place. The second part about the board portion is not part of the design, but Craig's.
The board would have to orchestrate somehow getting that draft, that type of policy draft at some point in time, and I just want to make sure that that doesn't go unnoticed. Because part of the one design framework we had for stormwater was to locate the stormwater detention facility closely adjacent to where this road would go. And now that seems to be not a necessity now because of previous surface of a potential parking lots. So that access road could have been a necessity for another reason, not just an extra ingress regress, but for access to storm break pond, because you have the right access road to it. It's my understanding now that, I guess the proper people here to answer is, the necessity for that storm pond is gone, or should be.
Should be gone. Right now, the direction we are heading is not needing that pond, but if it were to be needed, that is the location for it. As the calculations of the project moves further on, we'll know for sure, but right now, it is appearing that an additional detention pond in that area is not going to be used by.
And the cost numbers that are associated with designing and construction points to a parking lot, do you include a cost for the service parking lots?
Yeah, it's, the costs currently include underground detention tanks in those parking lots. And the difference in cost between putting the underground detention tanks in or the additional gravel and the previous material, my civil engineer has done his analysis, and it should either be a wash or a minor savings. But the construction manager hasn't finished their analysis of it yet.
Because all, even with underground storage tanks, at some point in time, when high-tech closes, they also discharge them.
Yes.
And the property designed for the service parking lot may not have to discharge, depends on, of course, it could, it could outclose.
Right, but it's a different kind of discharge. Usually at that point, it's not a point discharge.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Does another board member have an statement on the policy?
Yes, I do. Now, this is more or less addressed to the folks, the fine folks on Warrior Court. I have to go back and say that when I came out as acting, as the president, a number of months back, we had, in a consensus at an executive session, indicated that as far as the access road, having any type of regular use, it was not even going to be an item for discussion. We've not waved, waved from that view or concept in any way, shape, or form. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending how you want to look at it, in the last couple of months, I'm not aware of the need coming from our safety committee and the potentiality of how it's linked to crisis response teams. Now, I don't know if many of you know about crisis response teams, I dealt with them in the military, but they're much more effective, much more time-sensitive than they have been in recent years. And apparently, coming out of the committee, the action now today, for example, we have someone coming to assault the building, we're not going to screw around for any period of time at all, we're going to muster as many people from many angles as possible to save kids if we're under assault in any way, shape, or form by terrorists, by some maniac from our society, from whatever it may be. Let's say the building is on fire, we want immediate access for every vehicle and every person possible to save lives, save lives, save the kids' lives. This is, that philosophy has changed dramatically over the last couple of years, and we're embracing it. We're embracing that in the district. So in the last couple of months, the concept of even having the road there, something that we can get to, to get our people there faster in case of an extreme disaster, is a necessity. So from my perspective, you can call me a liar or not, I have to look at the concept of having something there, if recommended by the safety committee, that we can access there only, not for construction, trucks coming by, for convenience, not for special events and so on down the line, to ever open that gate. But if we've got to get in that way to get to our kids, because we have emergency vehicles and SWAT teams and anything else in some type of disaster, if it's critical, this is a study that's recommended from our safety committee, then we should do it. I have to sit back and think to my own experiences, and I will support that, and I will go against what the basic concept, even having a road or a partial road identified there. Back to my experience as a principal at Sunrise, we're going through the terrorist assaults in New York. You know, I'm thinking to myself, you know, they're going to be coming through our building, we're all thinking what's going to happen to these kids, and I'm walking around the building myself with a club that I used to walk with when I was in the Marines in the Philippines, and off the coast of Vietnam, but what kind of protection would that be? We've got a long way to evolve from that, we want sophisticated plans, we want rapid response, so consequently, it's a long way to explain the fact that, please forgive me, those of you at Warrior Court, but I would support, that gated area there, available in a very simplified sense, only for the need of crisis response relates to natural disasters and other types of scenarios. Nothing less than that. That's all I have.
One more comment. Hank and Dan, I would also need a guarantee, I think it's also, it's going to be too tempting, the gravel road there to say, well, that's a quick way for a construction vehicle to go together. Who's going to notice? I want to guarantee that there will be no construction vehicles whatsoever.
We'll build it last. We'll build it last.
Yeah, and we'll address it in the construction documents, too, in the specifications and the drawings, telling them that it's not a construction access, and put some type of penalty to it.
Does any other board member have a comment? We also have, in Bradford, I'm sorry, and CP, I have to say, you have any monthly updates on going? And this is not necessarily in going progress, you know, Hank's director, meeting in person right now.
As far as all of our preventive maintenance?
Before we get moved past the subject of our access road, will you have an opportunity to express our concern?
Yes, ma'am. You can do it right after, actually right after, that's what's recognition of visitors, you're right.
As far as district maintenance, we've almost completed, complete preventive maintenance throughout the districts on all boilers, air handlers, unit vents. The only thing we have to finish in the schools is the fan coils, which we found out through the, throughout the process, we are, we are missing several fan coils and motors in some of those, so we're going to be getting those up and running as soon as our budget permits. of those, so we're going to be getting those up and running as soon as our budget permits. We have several roof issues in the district. Right now, we have several inches of ice built up on the roof, but we currently have roof leaks that we're working on in Penn Middle, Sunrise, and Harrison Park. As soon as we can get rid of that ice on the roof, we've done some spot patching, but we've been pretty unsuccessful with the amount of ice that's on the roof. As far as, we do have an issue in Trafford with the main sewer line. We have old, the old main is made out of terra cord, a pipe, and it's all full of roots. The line will need to be replaced this summer. We had Mike Sees out from the Sewage Authority. Mike has been a great guy for the district, I've called on him twice to do repairs, he's been there immediately, and he's worked diligently with our crew to, to help us out with issues. He also worked with us over the summer in Sunrise for sewer smell issue that we had. Salt has been an issue. We made a decision about a month ago to purchase additional salt. Our salt inventories with that additional salt are holding. We also run two trucks with Township salt, and Tommy Lamaz and his crew has really helped out the district as well. They're great to work with, and they've been, we've been utilizing district salt on our That's all I really have. Any questions?
I got one for you, Jim. Do you have, can you give some kind of estimate, now that you've been here a year, year and a half, how much have you, are you doing in-house with some of your newer team members compared to what was done whenever you took the position over?
Well, we still use Honeywell High School as far as the control system. We still use Johnson controls, and we will continue to use those until we decide that we're going to switch to a, to a new control system throughout the district. But pretty much everything else has been done in-house. We, unless, we do use combustion service for combustion analysis on our boilers, but if we had the equipment, we could do that in-house as well. But everything else, we've done in-house.
Finally, Mr. Harris.
Yes, Dr. Harris, I just wanted to mention to everyone that we are having a drug awareness program at the high school on March 4th at 7:00 PM, and that's open to anybody and everybody, students, parents, anybody from the community, anybody outside the community for that matter. Like I said, it's at the high school auditorium on March 7th at 7:00 PM. It's a little different format, we ran one of these before, but we're going to have Ken Baca, who's our Westmoreland County coroner, and Tony Markachi, the county detective there, who have done it in the past, but we're also going to have some recovering addicts there to talk about some of their stories, to hopefully raise awareness of the growing problem that is out there with the epidemic of drugs, particularly heroin. So please spread the word, encourage anybody to come to that program, March 4th, 7:00 PM at high school. Thank you.
That is all I have, Mrs. Harris.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. It is now time for audience recognition. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statements will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no participant may address or question a board member individually. I may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. I have a list of residents who wish to address the board. Your name will be called in the order in which you sign up. Okay, first of all, Chris Lonzo.
My name is Chris Lonzo. I live at Carlisle Drive here in Penn Township. My husband and I are lifelong residents of Penn Township, and we're both graduates of Penn Trafford High School. I have two children, one a 2012 graduate of PT, as well as an eighth grader currently at Penn Middle. Both of my children have been members of PTAC during the past 14 years. I have been a board member of PTAC for 13 years, and I have served as the president of that board for much of the time. I'm here this evening to thank the Penn Trafford School Board for their hard work and dedication to this school district and the community of PT. PT is not just a district, but a family community that I am proud to be a part of and grateful that I've had the opportunity to raise my children in the same environment that I myself grew up in.
Chris, can I interrupt just a second? I just want to clarify to everybody, PTAC is Penn Trafford Aqua Pond.
Yes. I abbreviated that for time purposes.
I know, but they were asking.
I have an end in sight, just so you all know.
Okay, well, some people were asking, so I figured we'd get that out of the way. Go ahead, Chris.
I stand before all of you this evening to speak out on behalf of PTAC, and not just the swimmers that are a part of its team today, but those who were a part of its past and those that will hopefully be its future. PTAC is a parent-run organization that has been a part of this community since the 1970s. Our roster today includes more than 100 swimmers who participate with the team year-round. Our organization is part of the Chestnut Ridge Swim League, and we participate in meets throughout the surrounding area with nine close neighboring districts. We're proud that our team consistently ranks in the top three each year when we participate in the league's championship meets, and our team is recognized as a leader within our league, not only because of the level of talent achieved by our swimmers, but also because of the knowledge, organization, and dedication of our parent volunteers. Our coaches have strong swimming backgrounds and are excellent role models. Of the eight coaches we currently have working, six have come through the PTAC program, as well as the high school swim team. Some of our swimmers have qualified to compete at the junior national level, and one is currently attempting to fulfill his dream of competing at Olympic trials. PTAC hosts eight to 10 swim meets each year, which are attended by hundreds of families from the neighboring districts and teams. All of these families recognize the inadequacy of our swimming pool facility. Officials and volunteers working on the pool deck during meets are apprehensive about being knocked into the pool due to insufficient deck space, and are not always able to thoroughly officiate the meets because the deck is overcrowded with swimmers, volunteers, and pool equipment. This presents a true safety hazard to anyone in attendance at the meets. In March of 2013, we hosted the annual Chestnut Ridge Winter Championship Meet. The meet had over 600 swimmers in attendance, along with all of their family members. We achieved numerous, received numerous compliments about how efficiently and well-organized the meet was run, not only on the pool deck, but also in other aspects of the meet, such as the areas where families camped out for the day and the concession areas. At the conclusion of a meet, an official who worked within the league for over 10 years approached the meet director and indicated that in all his years of officiating, that one had been the best-run meet he ever attended, and the only thing that could have made it better was a better facility. That comment has resonated within PTAC and also with myself. As the president of PTAC, I feel it is my duty and obligation to stress to all of you that renovations to the high school pool area need to be a priority, regardless of whether construction bids come under budget. As we continue to grow, our facility is not growing with us. In addition to the Chestnut Ridge League, our swimmers also compete with the Allegheny Mountain Swimming League, which is a division of USA Swimming, and provide the higher level of competition to our swimmers who wish to move forward. As the size of our team continues to grow, the knowledge, interest, and abilities of those that volunteer to keep these programs running also has grown. We currently have the interest in manpower to host AMS meets, which would add prestige and income not only to our team, but also to our school district. But our facility is not adequate enough to allow us to move forward. The proposed annex to the renovations would allow for the opportunity and possibility of that growth. This would have a domino effect by not only allowing our team to grow, but would also allow AMS to grow and prosper. The pool has not undergone any significant or notable renovations or additions since the original construction of the building, which has created many areas of concern. Those concerns are a combination of safety, space, aesthetics, and pure and simple embarrassment. A brief walk through the pool area will allow anyone to observe the overcrowded spectator area, the cracked tiles around the pool deck creating a safety hazard for swimmers walking in bare feet, a cramped pool deck that does not provide adequate space within to walk around, an outdated ventilation system that does not provide a safe breathing environment for swimmers, coaches, meet volunteers, or spectators, inadequate seating areas around the pool deck for swimmers to utilize during competitions, outdated and cramped locker room space that does not permit multiple teams to change with respect and dignity. In addition, spectators are forced to use restrooms inside the locker rooms alongside the swimmers, and that does not allow for a proper safe sport environment. I feel it is important to point out that the facility is utilized not only by our club, but also the Penn Trafford Area Recreation Commission, the Penn Trafford Adult Education Program, and the Penn Trafford High School Swimming and Diving Team. These organizations are all intertwined and provide feeder programs to one another. The pool is the only pool within our community where residents obtain swim lessons for their little ones, can join a competitive swim team with their school-aged children, or where a high school student can have the chance to join a high school swim team, or anyone can find simple recreation in a pool environment. This March will mark the end of my tenure as president of PTAC, and I could not walk away in good conscience without publicly speaking out on behalf of everyone in the community that utilizes the high school pool facility. I understand and appreciate that the high school annex and renovations to the pool are a top priority if money is left over from the base plan. However, the annex project is so crucial that you have to find a way to fund it, regardless of where the construction bids come in. Our program's future is at stake. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. As you know, my family was involved, and I was out swimming a couple weeks ago, and had trouble actually getting back to the basketball game because of the pool deck was so cramped.
I have a question for you. Hey, have you and Hank spoke about the improved pool?
Yes, yes.
Did you have direct input to him?
Yes, we've talked a lot.
What's being proposed?
What's being proposed will be an improvement. So I would love for a lot, a lot, a lot of things to happen, but I'm also trying to be realistic and conscious of the financial situation of the district. What we need is a new pool, that's what we need. But I don't believe that that would happen. And Hank has been very imaginative about trying to get as much space as we can, and trying to get the best situation, given the confines of what's being presented, you know, I guess by the board or by the situation.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, I do have a question. Matt, when are we going to revisit the last bond discussion? There's a timing.
We are going to do that in March, actually.
So in March, okay. And they're coming to speak at that time, if we extend that out to 20, what that allows us to do with, because the last one was approximately 17, correct Brett?
Correct.
If we extend that out to 20, what additional money that?
I'll have him address what 20 years would look like, yes.
So that is an opportunity in addition to, and keep in mind, and I think, Nick, you pointed this out multiple times, that bonds in the past were typically 20 years in order to receive any kind of.
Bancorp always wanted 20 years. You didn't, the reason Bancorp said 20 years is that they only wanted you to do a project every 20 years. High school in 10 years now, they expect Bancorp to do 30% again. So 20 years was their minimum amount of years before they would approve another construction for that building, that was their pool.
So we're hoping to, in March then, discuss what the opportunity is for that, as well as, when are the actual documents from a bid perspective, when do we expect?
Bids is April. That's why we want to have all our discussions ahead of time, so when they come open in April, we'll be ready to go.
Right, the April meeting.
How many lanes are the most recent?
We have six, and that's pretty standard. The newer pools that are being built have eight.
Eight, eight is your Olympic size, is that correct?
Olympic size is a designation as to the length, which is 50 meters.
Oh, okay. Eight lanes too, it's not eight lanes.
An Olympic pool is eight lanes and 50 meters long. Ours is 25 yards and six lanes.
No, you, this is the second time you mentioned new pool. Give me a price tag on new pool, publicly.
I don't, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you, but it would be millions.
10 million.
10 million. Thank you. I've seen a couple of them, they are beautiful, but that's a beautiful price.
Fox Chapel's building them right now.
Is that right?
That's why he knows enough to tell us that like that, we're doing one in Fox Chapel.
That's a big one.
And I'll tell you, I've been to Fox Chapel's pool, and it's nicer than what we have now. The original pool, is that right Dave, am I right on that?
Yes, you could go to any pool, and it would be nicer than the pool right now. Bethel Park just built a beautiful eight-lane pool. Punnels Wells Pool, they just built, rebuilt their pool, it's beautiful.
Bethel Park still bigger, I believe, with 84 million, am I correct on that?
I would guess.
The entire project.
I think it actually ended up even higher than that.
I thought it was 90.
What was it, 90 then? Couple parts.
75.
I thought it was higher.
We did that project. 75 with change orders.
Okay, right, thank you, Chris. Next, Rand Donnelly.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rand Donnelly, I'm a 65-year resident of Warrior Court, and I know you're thinking of the old paddles. I want to make a few comments about the access road. First, just to re-comment the fact that we're here, I think we all agree, Dr. Harris's letter says, his letter to the residents, that I probably should have communicated a little better to us, the fact that it was not on the table, and all of a sudden, it seemed like it's an un-deal. But that aside, personally, I understand the need for an access road, I agree with the reasoning, often trace examples, obviously, those things, we even have plans. I think we need a little more specific definition as to what an emergency is, so there's no gray areas, so to speak. I appreciate those who have spoken stating that they support keeping it on the access road. I think the concerns of my neighbors and myself is what happens down the road. As Mr. Chad said, who's to say, I don't remember what, 65 years from now. So I just want to leave you, hopefully the rest of the board agrees with those who have already spoken, that support, and hopefully not to anything other than emergency there. I'll leave with three words, hopefully those three words will be what you can remember. Safety, functionality, effectiveness. Safety, Warrior Court is a narrow road, there's no sidewalks, people walk up and down the street, people walk the kids, they walk their dogs, people backing out of the driveways, there's a 20 mile an hour speed limit posted, people have a vet, that would not be adhered to, particularly to 17, 18-year-old kids, late in class, whatever. We had buses to the mix, I think it's just an accident waiting to happen. Functionality, as I said, the road is narrow, there's no shoulder, the road is in very poor condition, there's cracks, there's bumps, there's also drainage issue for the back end of Warrior Court, there's water, it shouldn't be water, there's icing over, kind of surprised me when I heard that it was on the table to have an access road open for public, the day was used, because it's kind of hard to even two cars through that, taking some time, and I can't totally imagine what we'd do like that if buses were to be there, so that kind of surprised me. And the third is effectiveness, as Mr. Leonard said, you have two exits, pretty much 200 yards away, I don't see how particularly, I believe, any more of that would help things flow smoother. If you have people coming out of Warrior Court, normally the traffic backs up at Warrior Court, so you need somebody blocking traffic at Warrior Court, it's blocking the traffic that's coming out of Pisces, so it's, unless you have some kind of, you know, plan where they're going back one way and right the other way, it's not going to work. So again, I'll be brief. Safety, functionality, effectiveness, hopefully all of the board's names, realize that, and hopefully keep all of your processes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Donnelly. BJ Couch?
Hi, my name is BJ Couch, I live in Warrior Court, I've lived there about 15 years, and my concern this evening, again, I want to make it clear that I think safety is a huge issue, but I would just like to comment, if we really are thinking about safety as a major issue, why are we trying to progress it in another project with the change of the stuff over again? Why don't we make this into a bigger issue, and see about putting funding or addressing this on a grander scale with one of the other options? To play the truth, if there was something like that, I wouldn't care if it drove through my nerves, I mean, drive through my nerves if they happened, but you could not fit a fire truck through an access road on Warrior Court, it would not work. So my concern is, I think I don't, no disrespect to the engineers, and I'm certainly one of the engineers, I don't know that, but it appears that we're only addressing a small portion of just the gravel road right now, but I think we need a little further beyond that. Once you get past the gravel road, where are you going? How much of the emergency exit is it really going to be? I don't think you'd be able to get out of it. I don't think you'd be able to get out of it if you had a fire truck or something had to come through. So I would just like to request that more, you know, this be taken off the table for now, and look at it as a bigger safety issue that should be addressed on a grander scale, and that possibly using the funds towards purchasing different property, that would make it come out on a 993, which would solve more than one of your issues, it would solve more emergency response issues, it would also put a greater part on more traffic issue. Because if you did, that's another concern. If you did have an emergency, and you brought people through that gravel road, I mean, you're so close to the first entrance as it is, maybe for a while, I don't know, you're not going to get in faster than that, or get anybody in the park if it is.
Thank you, Ms. Couch. Anybody, any comments? Before we move on to the next one? Okay, Susan Donnelly.
My name is Susan Donnelly, I live on Warrior Court, I've lived there for 27 years. I am the wife of Grant now, he's brought it up in most of the points that I certainly agree with. I also agree with BJ's comments. I feel that this would be a band-aid on a much larger issue if it comes to safety. I don't feel that the access road would lead out of the fire now for an actual emergency if it would be required. I think that you should explore other venues besides this. I certainly understand you doing this as a band-aid to the project of safety at this point, but I don't think it really holds true to the entire issue of the safety of this school district in an actual emergency, a terrorist attack of some sort. We've seen this across the country, and we, as proximity on Warrior Court, are just too close. If you can get the kids out onto 993 faster than just coming out of Warrior Court and being a quarter mile off the road, so that's my comment on the issue.
Thank you, Susan. Any comment?
I have one. The two of you gave some very good ideas, and we were hoping that she thought it was going to be this evening, because there is a gamut of other safety rather than your perception of a band-aid, which may nail the truth to that, one component, but we understand there are more pieces to this process that we're all kind of curious about to... Because there could be an awful lot more done, and we have a reactive safety program, so I feel certain we'll probably pursue that, and certainly we're hoping we'd have more added information as you're suggesting too. Thank you.
Yes, because that's what I heard before. I think they did do a traffic investigation on 130 several years ago, and I think it was well over the limit as to where it was, you know, where it should be for the size of the road and the traffic that was on it as it is already. So think about making, you know, a fix of an access road, especially for emergency vehicles, onto a road that is already over that for safety issues, really making sense to me.
Hank, Dan, you have any comments? Because, you know, I think they raised some valid points there. You've got a gravel road, how really you want to get...
I wasn't privy to the meetings with the safety committee, but my understanding was it's not an emergency access road to evacuate the school district's student body in 40 buses in the case of an emergency, because I'm not sure there's 40 buses waiting on campus to put the kids into to drive out. I thought it was more of an emergency access road if you have a drill and you're trying to get the students away from the building, there's another way for them to walk away from the building. Things like that. If you're trying to get, if you're trying to get emergency vehicles onto campus, police onto campus, and the main access road is blocked, there's another way for police vehicles to get onto campus to address the concerns. I don't believe it was meant, and again, I wasn't part of that meeting, but I don't believe it was meant to be an emergency evacuation road to evacuate the student body of the high school, because you wouldn't have the buses here to do that anyway.
This is something for our next safety meeting, we can have Chief Otto meet with the building committee, and we can also review our auditoriums, who are constantly ready for audits when the direction or access road is being addressed.
All right, we still have two more people. Doug Brown, I think.
Hi, my name is Doug Brown, I'm Warrior Court resident, thank you for the opportunity to address tonight. I appreciate a lot of comments that are done here, and, you know, how everybody is taking the issue out now. I also was kind of shocked that it got back on the agenda so quick, and how we were notified of it, or found out about through paper. We do appreciate the letter that was sent out from the superintendent, we do appreciate that. I just wanted to say that if, like, right now, if I couldn't get out this front entrance, I put my truck in four-wheel drive, I'm right across the top of the baseball field, there's an inordinate space between two houses on Warrior Court, I'd come right out of Warrior Court. You probably wouldn't be happy with me doing that, but, you know, in an emergency situation, if I felt my life was threatened, that's what I would do. But, you know, if that front entrance was locked, you can also access the high school from that place. I don't know if there, you know, the residents of those two homes could be approached. If you look at it like during normal weather, I mean, you know, spring-like weather, whatever you can see, it's almost like an access, it almost looks like there was a planned access there anyway, it's kind of like a gravel... I mean, the residents use it for a driveway right now, but it kind of goes right onto the property. Just an idea that came from me, as I was comfortable with the situation, so I'd like to see all my neighbors here tonight, and that you all are taking this up in a matter of consideration, that, you know, please put yourself in our place as you go to look to this. If you lived on Warrior Court, how would you feel? And if you say, wow, you know, these people have a point, I really wouldn't want that to happen to me, then please vote no for that, or find another, better option. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Last, John Rossi.
Yes, my name is John Rossi, I'm a Warrior resident, I'm here for about 12 years. And I'm not going to repeat everything, my neighbors have already expressed to everyone here, but I agree with everything I've said. The idea of putting another access point 300, 400 yards apart onto 130 really doesn't make a lot of sense to me. If we need an emergency exit, it needs to be on a road, less traffic than 993, I believe it's a better option. But I understand you would have to buy some property to get an access road to that route. And I agree with the space there, because we're using that for emergency exits. One, it wastes money, definitely an emergency landing pad for helicopters, or would that be... Just a suggestion, a landing pad for helicopters rather than a useless access road would make more sense to me in a time of crisis. As far as evacuating by foot, we're going to come through our yard, and I have no problem with that. If those kids are threatened in any way, they're certainly walking through my yard, it's much easier and much closer than an access road. And that's all I have to say, I mean, you take up your voting, if you decide to go ahead and put the access road in, with the idea for emergency, or please be specific as to what an emergency is, please have that defined as a policy, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
I just want to make one comment on Rand's question we had with regards to the other boards. I think the only reason why this is even back up for discussion, Rand, is we all felt very strongly, and when it first came up, that you did not want to make it an everyday road, because of a lot of the points that the residents have been brought up. The only reason it's back into the discussion was because it's purely safety. From a group perspective, we have no interest in using that road as a bus route. You had asked that, that the other, how the other folks felt it didn't speak. I'm speaking to myself, and I can tell you that there's not an interest in this board to use that as a road. It is used for daily traffic or anything other than emergency scenarios. I agree with Phil, and I think everybody here feels very strongly that they're not against putting a policy in place, so that future boards have to vote as a group to have consensus to change it for anything other than what this board or the safety committee feels it should be used for. I just wanted to clear it up for you. Just because it didn't speak doesn't mean I don't agree with it. I didn't want to continue to reiterate the same thing, but I felt, since you had a few people saying that, I wanted to make sure you knew that. I feel very strongly as well, that it should not be used for anything other than what you said.
Thank you.
I personally would like to hear what Officer Otto, Chief Otto, excuse me, has to say about it. You all raised some very real concerns, and I haven't been on Warrior Court in years, and...
It's in combination with our whole safety committee, because to be allowed to do a whole committee...
Oh, I understand, but...
That's...
No, 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 I understand that, I want to...
And actually, the original person came actually from our safety audit, I want to know what the safety committee's got to do with it.
For our safety committee.
For our safety committee, responding to our safety audit, Chief Otto is on our safety committee because he's the person who has the board.
Yeah, I guess I would be, I would want to know exactly what the safety committee, in conjunction with the local police, what they're intended, how they would intend to use it in the midst of a true crisis. How they can realistically use it, and like you all, I would want to know what you find in a true crisis. So I think we, my opinion is, we need a little more information.
Madam President, basically, what you stated is an important point. It's not an emergency road, it's a pretty broad subject. A crisis response access road, that's what we're talking about here, would only be needed used as a safety built, not necessarily only if they had to get children out, or people out, or whatever, to get emergency folks in. I tossed it over with the chief of police prior, they wouldn't be coming in there and foot blocking vehicles. They're talking about lickety-split, flinging vehicles in quick, because many people on-site displaying the situation as quickly as possible. That's a crisis response, not an emergency. Emergency could be too much stuff. Emergency could be somebody broke their car down the middle of the road, that's not all we're talking about. We're talking about if it's a crisis response policy, a securely secured, elongated road.
Is there a criteria for a crisis response road? I mean, would it have to be so large, would it have to be moving up to a certain area? Do you know the criteria for that?
No, I just stated, we'd have to develop that. There is no, there is no specific criteria for a crisis response road. We would develop a policy, go into policy man, almost the board could, certainly, I'm wrong of mine, that would be specific as to what that would be.
No, I'm sorry, I was not talking about the purpose or use of it, I was talking about the design and the functionality of it, meaning, you know, can you designate a gravel road of 25 feet as a legitimate crisis response access point? And once you come through that point, where are you out to? Is that enough? Because if you're really saying that that's where it deserves, not getting people in there on a crisis, what if you put that in and they won't fit? Or it's too much weight over the gravel road?
If I can add to that, this is from the tactical component of it, having had some experiences there. Basically, it was nice to see that so many were so open, and, I mean, it was so comforting, and so many would often offer your area to allow kids to come through and bail out or whatever, that's really comforting for all of us. But in actuality, it's a tactical plan, and they'll look, one of you were talking about an access point, look like a natural way by which you could drive vehicles through. A person, this response team would look at helicopter access, whatever they have, SWAT teams, and so on, and they'll look at approaches that are most convenient to, as plans A, B, and C to approach the building. That means cutting through your yard, your yard, your yard down the line. They'll devise that into a main tactical plan with a number of options depending on location of the perpetrator and that type of thing. So this could expand to a quite wide opportunity. Again, thank you for being so kind to allow you to be part of the battleground, God forbid we ever have to deal with that, but it may be ultimately excellent plan, coming from 993, coming from wherever it might be. So, if that helps.
Okay, any further comment? All right, then we will continue with the rest of our meeting. May I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the high school extracurricular fund report?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Petrusi.
Second.
Second by Dell.
Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of February?
So moved. Motion by Mr. Petrusi.
Second.
Second by Scott. Doctor Costco, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. I don't think there's any old business, is there?
None.
None, okay. We don't have a need at this time for an executive session, so we will move right into new business. Dr. Koschko, athletics and extracurricular.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to accept the following resignation, Stephanie Rudeman, assistant track coach, effective immediately.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to employ the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation, the acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Eric Rieger, full-time assistant track coach. Amanda Shannon, full-time assistant track coach.
Second. Second by Mr. Petrusi. Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following volunteer coaches. All coaches volunteers must have Act 34, 151, and Act 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Kim Graziano, volunteer swim coach. Stephanie Martini, volunteer assistant, 7th and 8th grade girls volleyball coach. And Joe Novak, volunteer varsity baseball coach.
Second.
Question.
Dell.
Second by Mr. Leonard, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think we had a question taken. Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That'll be all, Madam President, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Koschko, budget and finance, Mr. Petasik.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to authorize the administration to make payments amounting to $10,664. Courtesy are my professional employees in accordance with the negotiated agreement. The list as presented to the board, showing the individual payments due will be followed to official minutes of this meeting.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following expenditures for the high school renovation project according to the schedule as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Petasik. Buildings and grounds and safety, Mr. Leonard.
Yes, Madam President, I have one motion I'd like to put on the board for consideration. I'd like to make a motion to accept the following retirement resignation effective March 13, 2014, Richard Drenuski, custodian of Penn Middle.
Second.
Question.
Second by Mr. Scott. Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Mr. Nemec, employee relations, negotiations, and transportation.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nemec. Dr. Trey, food service.
Nothing to report, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. And Mr. Petrusi, personnel and curriculum.
Thank you, Madam President. My good young friend here, Mr. Petasik, we should put the report first. So number nine will be read first. Rooted point, Dr. Matthew F. Harris, Superintendent of Penn Shepherd School District, effective February 10, 2014 to June 30, 2017, has a salary of $129,000.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Want to make a statement?
Well, the meeting was kind of long, but I'll make it a little bit longer. First of all, thanks... Once, first of all, thanks for everyone in the audience who came out tonight. Thanks for all the administrators, school board. Very, very good honor. The next three and a half years of working at Penn Trapper will be very exciting as it offers many great opportunities. The non-negotiable goals created by the board have kept our staff very busy and motivated to take students to a higher level of learning and understanding. I will work closely with the board to develop new goals, to continue strengthening our district, to ensure they remain a top school in the state. The building project of the high school will enable us to implement many academic enhancements, showcase our extracurricular activities, and provide students with more opportunities for college credit, career preparation, and 21st century skills. Our middle school will be offering new opportunities as well. Jim and Roger have many ideas for implementing new programs for students to address foreign languages, STEAM, and academic readiness. Our elementary schools will be planning and implementing a new science series, computer instruction, writing program, and new opportunities for mass customized learning. The board will be working hard during the first, next few months to identify a food vendor, update the technology program with a potential billion-dollar technology purchase, prepare a new budget, and start preparations to determine the building needs for the rest of the district. I like being active, so I'm up for the challenge. I am glad to have Mr. Inglis's support, knowledge, and commitment, as he has done an amazing job doing double duty. Mr. Lego is a financial genius, whose analytical brain power keeps PTSD in Trapper running efficiently. And he knows how to say no to my spending, so it's always good. Mr. Carazia knows all of the special education laws, in and out, and he will make sure that all children in our district receive a top-notch education. All of the Act 93 administrators work very hard in their area to make each day better for the life of a child. The teacher's devotion to our children never go unnoticed as they work hard day and night and on their time off to raise student achievement, and it is reflected in our state test course. All of the support staff, both in-house and out, go out of their way to meet the many demanding needs of a wide variety of people, and somehow they just make it work and they make it look easy. And that's not hard to do. That's not easy to do. I feel hard, I feel very blessed to be working in a school district in which I'm part of the community. Penn Trapper is a great place to raise a family. The people are friendly and the community is safe. The township officials and all of our emergency management leaders and their staff are actively involved in schools and the communities they serve. Parents have expectations for their children, and they embrace the opportunities that the school district has to offer. Residents who no longer have full-wage children are still proud of their community, and they are very supportive of their schools that they, and that service their children. And finally, I'm very honored and humbled to be here, and I look forward to working with the dedicated staff, parents, and students of Penn Trapper's school.
I will continue now. Move to approve additional substitute teachers, support personnel for the month of February 2014. Second.
Second by Dr. Trey. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move the issue of question contracts, the following teaching course in section 1108 of the school laws of Pennsylvania. The teacher has satisfied a community of three years of teaching in the Penn Trapper School District. Robert Devon, social studies teacher, Penn Trapper.
Second. Second by Mr. Leonard. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Just a quick moment. It seems like just yesterday, it's kind of funny, the three years go by...
I know.
...that we were hiring Bobby Devon, and he has done an excellent job maintaining work. I'm up here a lot of nights, my kids have different events, and I kind of like to walk the hallways. He's always over in his classroom working, and it's kind of nice to see him. Sometimes I want to go and say, you know, go home, go do something else, and it's, he's a real nice guy, and it's kind of, I can't believe that three years has passed.
Just for a point of information, for anybody who calls sports, Bobby's dad, Bob Devon, a good friend of mine, passed away, I think, in 1989 or 99. I also, Bob's coach, in 5th grade, in Penn Trapper. And just so that you know, Bob's father had the privilege, he got a full scholarship from North Carolina State. Lou Holtz was his coach, and anybody knows named Lou Holtz. He coached Notre Dame to a national championship, and Lou Holtz still keeps in touch because Michael played, graduated both, Mike went, Bobby, Bobby can't go to graduate here. But Bobby's father passed away, Lou Holtz is very sympathetic. He does remember, Bobby, Bobby played for North Carolina State, Bobby did play in three ballgames. So it's one of our athletes that did come to this school district, did run division one, did perform in the ballgames. He's a very touching, very sad dad. Very good information for this one. Okay, sorry, I forgot, but his dad was always just a rude guy. Move to approve the following leave requests and subs as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petasik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following clinical practice request from Duquesne University and Chatham University as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept the following resident's resignation. Lauren Barne, paraprofessional at Penn Mills School, effective February 4, 2014.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following, first of all, new employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34-151, 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Shannon Marchlesky, paraprofessional at Penn Mills School, beginning February 11, 2014, at $10.05 per hour.
Second.
Second by Dr. Trey.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following makeup day designated by, on the 2013-14 school year. School closed in January 28, 2014. Makeup day will be 30 April 17 through April 4.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Do you think, Nick, if you put a proposal out here that says there's no more snow days, that that would be the end of it?
I tell you, I don't. They said, they get another, I was watching the channel, and, anyway, he says we have now had 17 days. That's not kind of time. 17 days, it's been below 10 degrees. And this, and this, I mean, we have this week here, yes, not bad, but next week's the cross supposed to come, so.
It's that cold and warm. That cold and warm.
Yeah, it was, it was unbelievable. This is, anybody called it old time winter, this is definitely an old time winter. It's, it's unbelievable. Old fashioned. Move to approve the Penn Traver's high school band trip to Hollywood, California, from November 28 to December 4, 2014, for the written request of Mr. David Cornelius, band director. The band will participate in the Hollywood Christmas parade parades and in Disneyland and Universal Studios Hollywood, as well as a band and color bar workshop with Disney professions. There will be no cost to school.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petasik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Who wants to take Mr. Noel?
Dr. Trey.
Dr. Trey.
We move to accept and file the minutes of the superintendent's information committee meeting held on Monday, January 6, 2014.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question. Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following revised policies and administrative regulations as presented to the board. Policies and regulations we made in official part of the minutes as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to tenderly approve the following policies and administrative regulations as presented to the school board as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the administrative regulations, section 200, 300, 600, 700, 800, and 900, which accompany the policies that are already been approved by the board.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to appoint Mr. Martin Stovar to the Westmoreland County Tax Collection Committee.
Second.
Second by Dr. Petrusi.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Dr. Trey. Mr. Stovar, taxes, insurance, and census.
Nothing this evening, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovar. Ms. Cho, solicitors report.
Thank you, Madam President. There's three areas that I thought the board should be apprised of. The three sets of bills that the governor signed, one group of bills he signed on December 18. There were 10 separate laws pertaining to the protection of minors from abuse and outgrowth of the Sandusky scandal at Penn State University. And it is very broad. One of them provides numerous amendments to the Professional Educator Discipline Act, broadening the reasons why discipline can be imposed by the Department of Education on educators. One requires the school, if a joint investigation of child abuse between local law enforcement and child and youth agencies exists, if an investigation is concerning a school employee, upon notification, the school shall immediately implement a plan of supervision or alternative arrangement for the individual under investigation to ensure the safety of the child and other children who are in the care of the school. The, one bill also broadened definition of bodily injury under the Child Protective Services law for child abuse. Previously, it was defined as a serious bodily injury. It has now been expanded to include the language bodily injury, which broadens the ability of the Child Protective Services to reach out and help children in the community. So there's, there are a lot of different things that happen, but many of them are in regard to the school, and it is a result of many task force working together at the state level in order to provide greater protections for children. The other one is a small games of chance law that was passed, and it will become effective January 27. And the requirements under the small games of chance are rather interesting. The State Police Liquor Control Enforcement Bureau is responsible to enforce and educate. Lieutenant James Jones, who's located in Allegheny County, it's his responsibility to statewide make sure that the laws are being enforced, but he focuses mostly on education. And what we've learned by looking at the new law and comparing it to the old law is that local entities who have auctions, sometimes they're called Chinese auctions, or all different kinds of ways, they sell tickets and collect money. No one was following the old law. So that's, that's kind of an interesting thing. So we're having, Lieutenant Jones is doing a seminar for all the school districts in Allegheny County in February, and we're thinking maybe in March there might be an interest in Westmoreland County to have him come out and do that. So that the new requirements under the new law are followed, but more importantly, that the requirements under the old law are followed. So that's, that piece, and that becomes effective January 12. And I think of even greater interest, the governor signed Senate Bill Number 57 last week, and that bill permits the school districts to intercept oral communications for disciplinary or security purposes on a school bus or a school vehicle. But in order to do that, a school board has to adopt a policy that authorizes the audio interception for disciplinary or security purposes. And then each school year, the school board has to not notify students and their parents or guardians of the policy by a letter mailed to the students' home addresses. And thirdly, the school board has to post a notice that students may be audiotaped, and that notice has to be clearly visible on each school bus or school vehicle that is starting through audio recording equipment. It applies only to a school bus or school vehicle used for the purpose of the school, but if it's not school-related and you're using a bus, you can't audiotape. So that might be something the board considers.
That is something I should look more into. I'd like to have that information, as well as the small games of chance, especially, because it's a few things. We attend a lot of fundraisers, and there's a lot of Chinese auctions, I buy a lot of tickets.
Yeah, we all do. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. All right. PTA, PTA representatives, Mr. Ryanair.
I'd just like to congratulate Dr. Harris and congratulate the board. I think you picked a good guy, and I think the staff will be more than pleased.
All right, do I have a motion for German?
Motion.
All right, the G will be adjourned at 8:41.